Good evening, I'd like to call the January 28th, 2019, meeting of the Matthews Board of Commissioners to order. First, we'll start with a safety minute, we've got a lot of people in the room, if you've got any bags or anything, please push them either under your chair or under the chair in front of you, so that everyone can leave the room if they need to. If we need to evacuate, there's a stairwell to the front right corner, most of you probably came up, take that down, go out in front of the building into the green area out front. There's also a stairwell to the left, we can go down there and move to the back of the parking lot. The defibrillator is out to the right side of the information desk out front, it's self-explanatory, but I see the chief is here, so, and many other qualified individuals who can use that if we need it, so. And 911 is the phone number, if you use one of the town phones, there is no number to dial to get out, it's simply 911, and obviously the cell phones are 911. So with that, the invocation this evening, I'd like to call on Mayor Pro Tem Higgin.
For those to care to, please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight to make decisions for our community. May our efforts be guided with insight and by an understanding and respect for those with differing perspectives on the issues at hand. Help us to recognize our responsibility to honor the past and to do what is best for today and for the Matthews of tomorrow. We ask that you keep safe those who take risks and make sacrifices for us in their daily work. Please bring peace to all in our community who are tired, lonely, sick, or worried, and as trusted servants, we ask your blessings on our deliberations this evening. Give us the knowledge and strength to act wisely and well. And also, please bless Commissioner DeMint and Melton, who are both out sick tonight. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. And this evening, we have scouts from Troop 118 at St. Stevens United Methodist Church on Sardis Road, I've asked them to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So can you guys tell us what you're working on this evening? You can turn around and face the audience. You're working on mayor badges for citizenship?
I'm working on a communications mayor badge.
I'm Bennett Lumber, and I'm working on a microcommunications mayor badge.
I'm John Hydra, and I'm working on citizenship.
I'm Mark Hanson, and I'm working on making sure the communication mayor badge guys get their mayor badge.
All right. Well, thank you gentlemen for being here. The next item on the agenda is recognition of the employees, Matthews Employee of the Year, so. So I understand the individual receiving this doesn't know anything about it, potentially, maybe they didn't know the hours, things happening. Congratulations. I understand Kerry's not the kind of individual who likes to promote himself for the wonderful things that he does for the town, but he has done a great deal, and his peers have elected him to receive this, this award this evening. One thing that was brought up by the Stamp of Excellence Team was the work that you did on the leaking water, this is the one that came up with Albert, and where you went above and beyond duty on a very cold day, repairing various water leaks around town buildings, and you and Albert spent most of the day getting soaked and standing in inches of water, yet you never complained and worked as fast as you could to get the job done. And you and Albert made a fantastic team on that. But one other thing that I just heard today, we had a fire alarm go off last Friday, and it was due to a pressure issue in the sprinkler system, and we evacuated the building, fire trucks rolled up, I mean, for us nerds, it was an exciting time to see all of that. But what it turned out to be is a problem within the system. And Kerry stayed here till late on Friday, working on that system, and spent, spent hours doing all that work, and, you know, I left here at five, the lights were still blinking, meaning the system was, the, the fire system was still out of service, but we had everything under control, but I thought that was great, Friday night, staying late and, and making sure that the system got repaired and everything got taken care of. So Kerry, thank you for that. So I'm going to turn this over to Becky now.
It's not that bad, I promise. And, you know, what the mayor described is really just one of countless examples of what you do for the town on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, and, you know, Albert and you really just go above and beyond throughout the town, and you always do it without complaint, without fail, you're always there whenever we need you, and your contributions fulfill all of the town's nine Service Excellence Keys, including demonstrating professionalism, exceeding expectations, teamwork, building and maintaining positive relationships, problem-solving, and maintaining a positive... And this one up?
Well, I'll just yell, it's okay. So the Service Excellence Team voted you as the 2018 Employee of the Year for going above and beyond your time duties to make a lasting impact, and we really truly are privileged to have you on our staff.
So on behalf of the town, please accept my compliments for an excellent job well done, and we are so glad to have you, and thank you for helping to make Matthews a wonderful, wonderful place to work. Thank you, Kerry.
Okay, now I want to do something, I want all Kerry's friends, friends, actual friends. Let's get a picture of all of them.
And for those of you who don't know, Kerry's son Travis is one of our firefighters, and so we put him up to telling his dad that he was receiving an award tonight, because he had been voted 10th to the National Honor of Honor.
Wow, good job, yeah.
I'd just like to be able to grow a mustache like Kerry, that's pretty impressive.
That's always a fun part of, of this job. Okay, next item or items to be added to the agenda, Ms. Hawk, do we have anything?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next item is public comment, we did not have anybody sign up this evening. Next is presentation on marketing the region, this is from the Charlotte Regional Visitors Authority, Tom Murray, Tom, how are you this evening?
I'm doing great. Well, thanks, it's an honor to be back in front of you, Mayor, thank you for the invitation, and we certainly appreciate being here. I brought with me Heath Dillard, who runs our research group and does a lot of the research that we have here, I wanted to make sure that you guys got to see him, because he works on our behalf to, to make sure that we understand the visitor economy and its value to our community, and, and what, not only the residents in Charlotte, but also the residents in the towns think of the visitor economy and the investments that we make into it, and so we're going to share some of that research with you. And I'll, I'll do the beginning of the presentation, talk about some of the marketing, and then Heath will jump in and do some of the research. Am I right, just about 15 minutes, Mayor?
Correct.
Okay, great. So, one of the things that's good news about our visitor economy is that we continue to grow dramatically over the last, say, five or six years, we're now welcoming 28.3 million visitors to the Charlotte region, and, and particularly, this is Mecklenburg County?
This is Charlotte.
This is Charlotte region. But, but those folks come into our community and they spend a lot of money, in fact, if you look at the bottom line, the new record this year that we reached was they spent $7 billion in our MSA, and, which supports the 66,000 jobs, a payroll of $2.2 billion, or million dollars, right?
$2.2 billion.
$2.2 billion, right? It's a good thing I brought him. And state a lot, local taxes of $519 million. And certainly, one of the more important things we talk about is the last column is the amount that it saves the residents of each of the counties, and in Mecklenburg County, the spending in our county saves residents about $360 per resident on their annual tax bill. You can see Mecklenburg County is, is the big kahuna here, they, they're the largest recipient of the visitor spending, but our organization supports the Charlotte region, and these are the counties that we measure most often. But I think the really important thing is how big our economy is in, not only in North Carolina, but versus South Carolina, our economy, our visitor economy is two and a half times bigger than any other county in North Carolina, and is almost that much bigger, bigger than any county in South Carolina, with Charleston at $2.3 billion, and Ory County at $4 billion. So our visitor economy in this MSA is incredibly large, and is incredibly vital to the success of our economies, not just in Charlotte proper, but also in the towns and in the greater And I think what we'd like to talk about the most is how, what an important employer we are in our marketplace. We say often that one in nine jobs in our community are people that are working in the leisure and the hospitality segment, and that segment is the fourth largest segment measured in the employer segment study, so it is an extremely large amount of employees that we support, and it continues to grow every year, and as you see, I'm sorry, I read that wrong, 136,000 employees in 2017, and a 4% growth, leading the employment growth of all the economies. So we, one of the most important things that we do is market the, the region for, to track these visitors, and we have become really focused on measuring that marketing and make sure that we can support the money we spend on it, and also to increase the amount of spend that we want to do. We realize that there are other cities that are spending more money than this region is spending supporting tourism, and we're using this research to justify that. We ran a particular ad campaign, was a $2 million spend in our ad campaign, and Heath and his team, along with a third party named, named Longwoods International, went back and studied the effect of our, our advertising, and we talked to people who saw at least one of our ads, and people who hadn't saw, saw our ads, and we, we came back with these results. I'll get into some deeper results on future slides here, but we were able to prove that that advertising generated $2.4 million in incremental visits, causing $233 million in spending, and generated $12 million in additional Mecklenburg County taxes. So what we like to say, for every $1 that we spend in marketing, somebody saw one of our ads, made a trip to our region that they weren't planning on making, and spent $115. So $115 to one, that also generated $6 in tax that goes back to reinforce those marketing dollars. So, in the business world, we think those kind of RRI's are pretty great, and it has been justification for us to increase our marketing spend. This year, we hope to spend almost $6 million in paid media, and we're continuing to measure those campaigns, and we're reaching out to newer markets. These are the markets we ran, we've been running campaigns in recently, we've expanded out to Memphis, and some additional markets that we hadn't been in the past. We like to call these our drive markets, although driving from Nashville or Memphis isn't all that great of an experience, we realize, so these markets are harder to induce travel, and some of our research does show that, but just, just to show you, we're spending $6 million in paid media, we call that, so we're actually making media placements. Nashville will spend $11 million during that, and even old, little old Asheville is spending about eight or nine million dollars, so we're still catching up to our role in making sure that we're doing our fair share of, of media to promote travel into our, into our region. But actually, you know, I, I love measuring ROI, because my background was accounting and finance, but I've, I've learned to value this result even more, and that is, after the, the gray bars are what people thought of our community who were unaware of any of our ads, and the blue bars are people aware of at least one of our ads, and we look at, we ask them about their perceptions of our region for things like culinary, arts and culture, diversity, sports and recreation, environmental factors like cleanliness, safety, those kinds of things, exciting, popular, and value, and you can see the amazing perception changes. Marketing experts that we deal with think these perception changes are incredibly remarkable. We have some theories about how we can make this kind of dramatic perception changes. One is that a lot of people don't have an opinion about the Charlotte region, and don't, don't know a lot about the Charlotte region, and when we're able to tell them that we are who we are, that changes dramatically the way they think about us, and we believe that has a lot to do with the reason why we're returning, we're getting such a high visitation rate from our advertising, because they are seeing a city that they think is exciting. We all know that we've been really blooming in culinary, we're paying particular attention to that. In fact, we've run four themes in advertising recently, culinary, and also touching on our craft brew scene, arts and culture diversity, and, and recreation, and we've been spending a lot of time talking about sports and recreation, which is particularly pertinent because of some investments you've made here in Matthews, and the success that we've had at Matthews Sports Complex. But we're really excited about these perception changes. We also do a lot of work promoting the towns, and I'm not sure that everyone in, in the towns is aware of that, but we, we have a lot of what we call owned assets, we produce a magazine called Happenings, that we do a lot of work promote, promoting the towns, but we also do a lot of what you call earned media, where we get people to write stories about our community, and you'll see in a moment that our, the effect of earned media is actually even more dramatic than the effect of paid media, which is the media that I showed you earlier. But we, we are doing a lot of work promoting your town, and, and particularly because I think we, we think that people find a particular exciting reason why to visit. That's just some of the, some of the stuff that we do. Here's the, the point on earned media, so if we can get earned media tied in with paid media, it's really the sweet spot, I may have a slide that shows you that next, but you can see the dramatic change, if somebody reads a story about the culinary successes, for instance, we had a big article about, from Food and Wine Magazine saying, saying that Charlotte is one of the most up and coming cities in the country for, for culinary, and it's just about to be a breakout city, and, and so that ad showed dramatic change in the way people perceived our city. We have about six or seven people that work in, just trying to get stories placed about our, our region, and they do a really good job of it, we've had 48 hours in, in Charlotte with, with the New York Times on, on their Weekend Magazine, that was a really big play, but also things like Ink Magazine and other places that we also use some of our paid media, or earned media to gain attention for economic development. So youth amateur sports is also a very big part of what we do, particularly because the hotels in our region really value weekend business, and they really value amateur sports. Amateur sports is a really competitive world out there, other cities are making huge investments, you made a particularly large investment in amateur sports with the sports complex, and we're really proud of the success story around that, and I'll show you some examples of that, but you can see the economic impact of $107 million in FYI 18 from just youth amateur sports in our community, 234,000 room nights, 181,000 visitors, so we, we hosted over 200 youth amateur sports events. Matthews County Sports Complex is probably one of our most, our biggest success stories, with 37 events booked and 80,000 total attendance, 788 different teams visiting, 41,000 visitors, $17 million in economic impact from your, from your sports complex, a real great story, this is just one year's performance, and you're, you know, congratulations to you for making such a, a wise investment, working with the county, and we're really proud to book business into this, this venue, it's really, has high, also high satisfaction rankings from the people that use the, use that and come to visit Matthews, so we're excited about that. What I did want to say to you is there's lots of markets and sub-markets that we work on, there's 27,000 hotel rooms throughout, throughout the county, but as you can see, there's lots of markets that we need to promote, we don't just promote Uptown, in fact, Uptown is, is not the largest market that we promote, a lot of times you hear people saying you're just promoting Charlotte Uptown, that's not the case at all, we, we work hard in, in all these markets to fill the hotels. The good news is, is we've had record performance in the hotels and restaurants, and we continue to see the hotel and restaurant taxes grow quickly for our community. So there's one part that we also think is really important, is that when we are spending money advertising for tourism, so when we're talking to the people outside our community about Charlotte as a visitor destination, or as a tourist destination, something else remarkable happens, and we call that the halo effect. We've been working with the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance, and as you'll, you'll probably hear more about, we're doing joint marketing now to, to, because what we found out, when we do ads for tourism, the attributes that, that help predict success in economic development, so moving companies to our region, are also dramatically affected. People who saw our tourism ads are reflected in the results that are not in gray, so unaware of our tourism ads are the gray bar, but the paid media is the next bar, the lighter blue bar, the earned media is the next bar, and, and the, the success story comes when if somebody sees a piece of our earned media, also remembers a, a paid media ad, and we had that bigger success of that dark, darker blue bar, the darkest blue bar. So you can see, for instance, in a good place to attend college, somebody who had never seen any of our efforts had a 13% positive feeling about the attributes of, of the Charlotte region, they, after seeing our ads or our paid, or our earned media, you can see their perception changed all the way to 40%, so really dramatic, or a good place to start business is the same way. So you can see the reason why we believe so much in our media efforts and our marketing efforts, because they're producing pretty good results. So when the Regional Business Alliance was formed, we showed them these kinds of results, and we've come, we've entered into a joint marketing agreement, where in particular, all the money that's coming from the region, not from the, from Charlotte proper, will be put back into marketing our region for, for business, for economic development, and we are going to use the same kind of branding effort to, so that we can get the, the knock-on effect of each other's advertising. And we continue to grow, and the reason for this slide, because of the success that we've had, we continue to grow pretty dramatically, as you know, 62 people come to our region every day, but interestingly, it's spread pretty evenly, the growth is, is throughout, so you can see Matthews had 18% growth, you know, you're nudged out a little bit by Huntersville's growth, but you outpace Charlotte's growth as a percentage of growth, so 100, so, so I guess you're kind of coming in second behind Huntersville here, but Matthews has really had strong growth as well, and something to be proud of. So this is where Heath is going to step in and talk a little about some of the research he's done on the towns, and we'll be happy to take questions after.
Yeah, so really here to just continue the point Tom has, has made, really where the intersection of economic development and, and tourism really lies, and, and there's a, you know, there's a reason that the Charlotte region is seeing such growth, is that because the, the things that make you want to visit a region are, in a lot of cases, the reasons that would, would help sort of turn, help make that decision for a place to live. And so what we do every year is we start, we want to understand residents within Mecklenburg County, we want to understand their perception of tourism as an industry, as, as an economy that helps add to their quality of life. And so we segmented that feedback by, by the residents who live in the six towns that make up Mecklenburg County, you know, taking out Charlotte, and you can see that in all cases, more than eight in 10, and in most cases, nine in 10, have very strong positive feelings about how tourism impacts their life, whether or not they, they take advantage of some of the tourism assets that live here, or the fact that they believe that tourism should, is a worthy investment of, of, of public support. The other thing that we want to do is we believe that the residents of the Charlotte region are our biggest asset, and I'll talk about some of the, of the literal assets that we have that drive tourism to Charlotte in just a bit, but the number one reason that people come to Charlotte, or anywhere in the Charlotte region, is to visit friends and relatives, so the people who live here are our strongest assets, and so we do a lot of work to really educate and to grow the awareness of, of what a vibrant and interesting place that we live in, because we know that if we can create advocates of Charlotte region, Matthews particularly, that we can convince more and more people to come, and that when we do have friends and relatives come to visit, that we won't just do barbecues in the backyard, we'll go out, we'll experience some of these new breweries, some of these new restaurants, take advantage of some of these really cool chefs that we have emerging in the marketplace. We also really wanted to understand, you see on the left-hand side here, these are the, these are the city of Charlotte-owned venues that the CRVA manages, and you can see here the percentage of towns' residents across Mecklenburg County who have visited an event, whether it's a Charlotte Checkers game in Bojangles Coliseum, or a Hornets game, or some kind of concert in Spectrum, the Spectrum Center uptown, we're, we're really having and hosting a lot of residents who are taking advantage of, of these publicly invested in tourism assets. And, and so you saw all of these same attributes with a focus on people who don't live here and how they feel about Charlotte. But we also want to know if our advertising, if our local communications plan is working But we also want to know if our advertising, if our local communications plan is working as we try to create brand ambassadors and advocates for the Charlotte region. And so we turn those same questions back on residents of the region and we ask, you know, what do you think about the region as a culinary destination or as a place for outdoor sports and recreation and outdoor adventure? And you can see here that we, you know, our own local residents feel very strongly, in many cases, more strongly than those on the outside. So we feel very favorable that our residents will continue to be strong advocates for us and continue to help us, to help us grow. So one of the things that we want to know is that when folks have, friends and relatives come to visit, you know, we want to know what are the things that they're doing to get out of the house? Nine and ten of the residents say that when folks come to visit, that they're staying overnight. We find that they aren't just staying in that person's house, that a third of those are actually staying in hotels. So the friends and relatives tourism market actually is generating heads in beds and new hotel demand of it on. But shopping and dining have always been the two biggest things that we find people are doing. So they are getting out of the house, they're hitting up the many different shopping centers that we have throughout the region, they're taking advantages of the breweries and nightclubs and things like that, but they're also going out to many of these different restaurants. And then we want to know for the CRVA, Tom mentioned that we wanted to measure the impact of our leisure advertising and that's just one component of what we do, but we bring in over three-hundred meetings and conventions. The convention center alone hosts two-hundred-and-sixty annual events. You saw the volume of youth amateur sports. We also do international soccer and college football and college basketball. And so there's a lot going on within sports. And then we want to look at the other three venues that we manage and that we book and that we generate events to, and we want to understand the visiting impact of those facilities as well. And so once all said and done in fiscal eighteen that ended last June thirtieth, we can take that twenty-eight million visitors and the seven billion dollars that they spent and we can understand that without the CRVA's contribution across this sort of wide array of the things that we're responsible for doing, that without those efforts, two and a half million people would not have visited Charlotte, Charlotte region, and they spent over four-hundred million dollars and created an economic impact of nearly seven-hundred-and-sixty-six million. So we know the work that we do is really important. It employs people, it creates wages, it regenerates taxes back into the local market that we can continue to invest in a very vibrant industry that's continuing to grow each year. So with that, we'll take any questions.
Any questions? I do have a question. The CIA tournament leaving, I guess several questions, what kind of an impact does that have when something that large leaves the area? And then what, what lessons have we learned from that and what do we need to do going forward to prevent that type of thing from occurring in the future?
So CIA double-A tournament, every year we do their economic impact. It's about a fifty-million-dollar economic impact. To put it in perspective, we do seven billion dollars in tourism a year. So fifty million is a big number within that seven billion, but it isn't, it isn't catastrophic. But we also book lots of other events. For instance, we have the NBA All-Star game coming in and it will be well over a hundred million dollars in economic impact. Then we have, we do have the CIA double-A for two more years, so they come in immediately following. And then we have the ACC Championship immediately following in the Spectrum Center. And we go on to host many other events. So while we are disappointed to lose it, we also understand the decision that they made to rotate. Every other conference in the country moves their conference center around and as we did research for our customer, one of the top things that showed up in their attendee research was that they thought in order to be more successful, they should rotate. And we, we respect their decision to move. We bid heavily, but we also understand that folks move and we hope to welcome them back. They're not relocating their headquarters. There was an effort to try to get them to name the next two host towns, and I think probably we would have been the next one after Baltimore, but we, we want what's good for them so that they can continue to grow. I don't think there's really any lessons to learn other than that we have to respect our customers, that we need to work with them to make sure that they're successful. We need to stand in their shoes. And, and, and I, you know, I know there was some negative press about it leaving, but I wouldn't do that to our customers. I want them to, I want them to understand that we respect their fiduciary responsibility they took in examining and bidding out the business, remembering six years ago, I convinced them not to bid it again before, again, and signed a six-year deal with them to make us now hosting it for a record fifteenth year. They've never been anywhere longer than six years. And so we're pleased with that. I don't think you'll see, you know, negative numbers for our, our growth in tourism in those years, in twenty and twenty-one. I also let you know that we're spending a hundred and ten million dollars expanding the convention center and we've been booking into those years because we booked three and four years out. Hopefully we'll build it on time because we've sold that space numerous times and we expect a bigger growth of our economy because of that. We've also experiencing record hotel growth in our region and those hotels have done a really good absorption of the new supply, haven't suffered very much impact on their occupancy and so we think we're going to continue to grow. So I think that's, I think they need to learn about rotating, how healthy that is for their company, for their group, and we certainly are going to try to bid the next time they're back.
Good. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Tom and Heath, that was a very interesting presentation. Thank you for coming and sharing it.
Sure.
In looking forward, how will, what will be the, the impact coming from the Republican National Convention? And is that considered free press because you're going to be nationwide on the, on the television stations and the morning shows might be here as well? And will that add to everything?
Sure. So we didn't talk about it a lot, but one of the things that we do is book what we call strategic events, these events that give us a PR presence that we can't afford to market into. So we'll reach markets that, for instance, in the NBA All-Star will be shown to two-hundred million people in China, right? We don't market in China, right? So it's interesting the opportunities that you can get. We hosted the Democratic National Convention in two thousand and twelve. We measured the economic impact then. It was a hundred and sixty-eight million?
Sixty-three.
A hundred and sixty-three million dollars. We expect in today's dollars, that number will become even bigger, but we'll recognize, we'll welcome fifteen thousand journalists. We have a team of private sector, public sector, paid or earned media folks that are communications experts, for you guys who are learning communications. They will be helping these journalists because while they're writing about what's happening in the, in the convention, they also are writing stories about Charlotte and we really benefited from that, from about the Charlotte region. And so we'll have stories written for them, pre-written for them. We got lucky a couple of times where journalists got, got comfortable with what we wrote and almost printed it word for word, which we, I think that's really nice as well. But, but we also take them on tours, give them story ideas and, and yes, we think the hundred and seventy million dollar economic impact will be great, but the media value will probably be more valuable.
When it comes around, remember us and bring a few this way, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I'm really proud of our mayor and she took a lot of grief for supporting the Republican National Convention, but we also, as I said before, hosted the Democrats not too long ago, but she's worked hard with also the state leaders to cause us the success and, and between our mayor and Senator Tom Tillis, that was a kind of a, a big part of the success story that we had in getting that convention. So hats off to Mayor Lyles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, Tom and Heath, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next item is reports from advisory boards and committees. So we have an environmental advisory committee report from Mr. Gordon Miller, the chairman of that committee.
Thank you very much. This is our early report. We often do a couple of reports during the course of the year, so this is the January report. Thank you very much for the opportunity there. I would like to recognize one of our committee members, one of my colleagues, David Ross is right here to my right, and he's been involved in all of this too. So yes, we've got a good committee and a good activity thing going on. Now, where's the clicker? There we go. Okay. Brief agenda, very quickly, want to talk a little bit about smarter growth in Matthews. That's what we're going to be talking about with what I've got in my hand right here. I do want to just hit very quickly on the VW settlement. The official name for the next one is, I've got to write it, read it down, it's Breathing Room. I wanted breathing easy or breathe easy is the title of it, but I got voted out. So we've got that going. What did I just do? There we go. Okay. Smarter growth in Matthews. Reality is, growth is going to continue to occur, regrowth is going to occur. And what we're talking about is new, we're going to talk about renovation, repurposing. We're going to do some tear down and rebuild. There's one going on within a hundred yards of where we are right now, across Tanktown Road. So how can we do this better? How can we make this a better opportunity for bettering our environment in Matthews at the same time as we grow? What do we do? We wanted to create a simple bi-fold. It points out that things can be done, better ideas for environmental management in the town. It's aimed at everybody, the town itself, what can we do in the town? And I'll hit on these topics in just a moment. For developers coming here, for others, the people who are in town redeveloping as we work our way through. How do I, oh, I pushed too many buttons. Okay. Did I, did I go to, I clicked it there. There we go. Excuse me. Topics include energy, and really what we're talking about is management of energy, stormwater, solid waste, noise, air quality, interior water use. These are things that we can get involved with. If you get too far into things, we get into the wonderful world of the Department of Environment, Environmental Quality, we may get into EPA's realm, but things like these that are listed here are things that we can do, we can make happen here in Matthews that can be successful in terms of managing our environment in a better way. The ideas are solid, there's a number of them, those are just topic areas that we just mentioned. They're idea spurring, but they're also thinking about what about neighbor impacts that we've got in the community? And again, who can use this? The town can be a leader in this in terms of getting better. We're seeing this with the city of Charlotte right now with their twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty and twenty-fifty goals of getting carbon neutral by twenty-fifty. So what we want to do is have those kinds of things, have that kind of thinking going on, maybe not quite as rigorous as the city of Charlotte, but definitely an opportunity for us to be involved and make things begin to happen. The plan, make it available for folks, people who are coming in. Now, keep in mind, we do have other governments in Matthews, not only our town government, which we represent right here, but others. And keep in mind too, that tear down, rebuild, repurposing, those are all the kinds of things that can be done better as we have seen in other communities around the nation. Others, that might be just as we talk about our own activities as homeowners, as business people in the community. Want to jump over very quickly in keeping on the time thing. VW settlement, this is air-related. You'll recall that the VW folks got sacked by EPA for an interesting thing on four-cylinder diesel engines. North Carolina got ninety-three million dollars of that settlement. Thirty million has been set aside by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for municipal equipment projects to reduce air emissions. The progress has been very slow. As a matter of fact, we were supposed to by now had our opportunity to present programs or projects to them. They are probably going to be at best getting that going in March, but what we have is an opportunity to do it. CJ's got the lead on that. And I really got a note down there at the bottom. This is available grant money for new, less polluting equipment from other than tax dollars. So we can get this because VW did something wrong. Let's see if we can get some of that thirty million dollars that's been set aside for the municipalities to do some stuff for our community here in Matthews. The other area and finishing up, this is my breathe easy, which is the one I liked rather than breathing room. It's an EPA program. It works through Louisa, Land Use Environmental Services. We want to stay in attainment and ozone. What we're looking for is community input. At this particular point, about five hundred citizens have been, including myself, have been involved in getting ideas out. Now, at this point, the political involvement has been relatively small. It's been mostly community members who are not in the political arena. And the result is, I'll tell you what the three biggest things for trying to keep us in attainment are, additional greenways, better walkways, and electric school buses. I think we need to have a little more, what's going to work? What's going to be an immediate impact? And the, the political impact needs to be there. A couple of ways of doing it, and Becky, you're here in place of Hazen, is to get the Louisa folks over here, the air quality folks, and have a few of us sit down and talk a little bit about what we can do, both in short-term, medium-term, and long-term to keep us in attainment for ozone. The second thing is there will be some other meetings being held with some of the political leaders in the area. The Council of Governments is working on some stuff right now to have that, and we need to make sure that we're involved with that so that we don't find ourselves looking for electric school buses. And the reason I bring that up, I'm not saying that electric school buses are a bad idea. That's not what I'm saying. What I am saying is there was nobody in the United States making electrical, electric school buses and their estimated cost is three to five times what a current school bus is. So this is one of those things where we're talking about huge amounts of capital and what the gain may be. There may be other ways to get the gain that might be more important than that. And with that in mind, I think I kept it about five minutes. Commissioner Curry, did I do a pretty good job of?
Did a good job.
John, okay? It's there. Thank you for the opportunity to present our ideas and thoughts. Keep in mind, grab a few of these, let's see. Lori, you have them?
I've got them.
She's got, just check with Lori, she's got them for you. And as you're talking to folks, these are the ideas that may make it better here in Matthews. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions for Gordon? I did have one question about recycling. Your last report, you, I think you said that it had dropped in Matthews. Has the committee done anything to work towards trying to boost that up?
It has crept back up largely because of, what I hate to say, hurricanes. Because the diversion rate for all the limbs, leaves, branches, all that kind of stuff, that's crept up. Last time I spoke to you, it was thirty percent, we're up in the thirty-four percent range. It seems to be going up a little bit. Now, keep in mind, we're getting a little bit of challenge on that from people who are saying, well, they're not taking all the recycling materials that they used to take. And we hear that Lincoln County is not accepting any recycled materials at all, even though there's a state mandate out there. Mecklenburg County is in a very positive position on that. We can accept those materials as we have in the past. We've got markets for them. I assure you, the markets are not as strong as they used to be. The metals market has always been very strong, but right now, glass is getting picky. Brown glass, which is typical of beer bottles and other containers like that, that's not going anywhere. Clear glass, they want all of it they can get. So we're getting a little bit pickier on what goes. In addition to that, with all the, I'm not going to describe it as turmoil, but it's sort of turmoil with the trade markets around the world. We used to send a heck of a lot of material to China. The Chinese have sort of put a wall up, that's a very, that's a different topic completely.
Did we pay for?
Yeah. But we're transitioning over, the Vietnamese are picking up, Indonesians are picking up some of that market and we're transitioning into those markets. It takes time to go through the transition, but it seems like we're going to be okay here in Mecklenburg County. I can't speak for Lincoln County, I can't speak for Union County, but certainly here in Mecklenburg County, we seem to be in a pretty good position. Nothing's great, but a pretty good position about that. I do want to remind you that twenty-twenty is the big year on the solid waste side, the per-ton cost, and we've talked about that. Currently, it's in about the thirty-dollar range, it may go to forty-five. That's going to be a pretty big hit for us on the solid waste side. Thank you very much for the opportunity to answer your question.
Thank you, Gordon.
All right. See, item nine B is Economic Development Advisory Committee, and we have the minutes provided to us, the agenda. Next item is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda items ten A through ten G two.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving to the next item of unfinished business, receive an update on the twenty-eighteen Planning Conference to-do list. I'll turn to the Assistant Town Manager for that.
Sure. So Hazen has put together an update on where the projects on the to-do list stand through the end of January, and I can either go through them one by one or I can just ask if there are any questions of the board.
I think we can just ask if there's any questions. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. I had a question on the Planning Conference to-do list, item thirteen regarding the market facade. the market facade grant program to increase awareness and participation. It says staff will soon be sending out a letter and brochure to every business to make sure that they're aware of the program, et cetera. My question is, should or can this program include murals? For, for, let me just say a couple things. It, a mural might be on a sidewall instead of a front facade, but creating interest in a courtyard, which we have around town, adds value as well.
Sure. So, the town clerk assisted me with some research on that very topic just a couple of weeks ago. And it is allowed, that it would be an applicable use of that fund. There is only $4,000 in the fund, and it's a 50-50 match, the way that it's currently set up. So, there wouldn't be a lot of dollars available. But it is an option for the program. We did discuss it at our last Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting, and the group was supportive of it in general, but also acknowledged that, you know, there's not going to be a lot of funds to go around. So, the other thing that we talked about was the board's discussion at the Mini Planning Conference, where there is perhaps a larger move afoot for a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee that could potentially be requesting its own line of funding in a future budget that may negate the need to use the facade grant funds for that purpose.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Becky, to piggyback on that, I don't know what your timing is, but we just went through a Red Brick Board meeting, and we'll be having a strategic planning session here. One of the things we discussed some time ago, and Jay will recall this, is he and I had conversations in talking with business owners about what they could be doing to their facades, even if they didn't invest in that facade grant. What I'd like to sort of see if we could slow this up a little bit, have a conversation with Red Brick, what I'd like to propose is that between Red Brick and staff on the planning side, be able to visit business owners and just talk to them about their options, even if it means an hour or so of free design service, so to speak. But at least it gets some momentum going that maybe in the future, they will look at a grant aspect of it. So, it's just another outreach piece that we're looking for on the Red Brick side. But at the same time, you know, Jay and I have talked about this for many years, about how to sort of rise, raise this up to the next level.
Sure. The letter was just approved a few days ago, and it has not yet gone out to residents. Is that correct, Maureen? Or, excuse me, to the business owners? So, that shouldn't be a problem at all. So, we can talk a little bit more and try to coordinate that. Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item is review draft of the vision statements. And I'll call on Maureen Keith for that.
Good evening. For your consideration tonight is the latest draft of our vision statements. We've gone through a couple of edits, and hopefully this will be our final, our final version. And this will complete the updating of our town, our vision process for this year. I can take any questions?
Any questions?
I think they were great.
Okay. They're much better than how they started out, that's for sure.
And tip of the hat to Maureen. She has put in so much time and energy on the various reiterations of this. So, thank you.
Okay. So, the request here is that we approve the vision statements, completing the Our Town, Our Vision update process. So, do we have such a motion, Mr. Urban?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the vision statements, completing Our Town, Our Vision update process, per the memo dated January 24, 2019, as prepared by Maureen Keith.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Maureen. The task is done. 11C, approve budget ordinance amendments to allocate fund balance for replacement of town hall railings and columns in the amount of $110,000. CJ?
Mayor and Board, thank you for hearing me tonight. I came to you previously about upgrading the columns and the handrails, which I think the board realizes is sorely needed. You did approve a budget originally of $80,000. Once we spoke to the manufacturer of the columns, what they had, what they were envisioning for us, I think it's not what we really want. The columns that they had specified were 30-inch columns in diameter. Our current columns are 44 inches in diameter. Mr. Urban, with his, his architecture background, pointed me out to some, some literature and some figures, and helped in determining that really 44 inches is really the minimum that we want to look at for columns, for it to be, to look to scale with the rest of the building, and the type of columns, and the, and the height of the columns. And talking back to the contractor, they have stock column sizes, the ones in that area, the 30-inch, they have 36-inch columns, and they have 48-inch columns. To go to a 44-inch column would require custom mold, which is really expensive. So, 48-inch columns are, meet the minimum of 44 inches. Unfortunately, they are more expensive than the 30-inch columns that were specified to tune at $63,520. So, what we're asking is that the board allow us to move forward with the contracts for the railing and the columns, not to exceed $110,000. That does give us about $10,000 in contingency, in case the railing costs are increased, because they now have to widen that just a little bit more, the increased column width.
Any questions? Mr. Miller?
I just have a, thank you, I just have a primitive question. I looked at the columns when coming here tonight. The round column itself sits on a square cement block, so to speak. I assume the cement block, and it's edge to edge. The square cement block would be replaced as well?
Correct. Yeah, the base of it, it's approximately one foot, four inch, four inches larger or wider than the existing ones. And I have measured that out, out there to make sure that it would work.
Will that throw off any of the support structure up at the top at all? Or are you able to offset it slightly?
Yes. So, very good question. There is a structural support on the inside. That would remain where it is, and the columns themselves are hollow. It's a facade, and they can be shifted with, and keeping the structural member where it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgin?
CJ, I know you've mentioned that the contingency is $10,000, but in the future, can you stipulate it specifically in the memo?
Yes, sir.
I get kind of nervous when it says a small contingency and doesn't say what it is, although you did verbally say what it was. So, if we don't spend that contingency, it'll, it wouldn't exceed $100,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Urban?
So, is this a turnkey at 110?
Yes.
They come?
Well, two turnkey, two turnkey projects. First for the columns, there's one for $63,000 and change, and then the other one with the railings for $40,000 roughly.
But they're going to come, take out, and replace, put back. So, we're not going to have to worry about that. I'm assuming we'll still have shop drawings provided for both those applications, and you'll do a final double check?
What, yeah, what they're going to do with the railings, they said they could do shop drawings, but it'd be much more expensive. Instead, what they're going to do is come out and bring them out for a dry fit, to make sure they fit in the field, and then modify them if needed before finishing and powder coating them.
Seems like a lot more work than just drawing it, but okay.
Mr. Higgin?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow staff to proceed with both projects, the columns and railings, as identified in CJ's January 24, 2019 memo.
Okay. Do we have, can you include the amount of 110,000?
Not to exceed 110,000, with a contingency of 10,000, including a contingency of 10,000.
Okay. Motion been made, seconded by Commissioner Querry. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Higgin, would you like to make the budget amendment motion as well?
Yes, I would.
This is a new part of.
I would also like to make a secondary motion to approve the attached budget amendment ordinance to allocate the funds necessary from the general fund balance for the columns and railings.
Okay. Mr. Querry seconded that. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Higgin. I know that's a new, a new thing we're doing now to make sure we get that covered. All right. The next item is 12A, receive information on police procedure slash nuisance abatement. And is the chief here? There he is.
Walk softly and carry a big book. Good evening. My name is Clark Pennington. I'm Chief of Police. First off, thank you guys for having me here this evening. Kind of want to talk about and bring, basically give you a notification and update on a program and a process that we're working forward here in Matthews. This is a new process for Matthews. I believe this is the first time we've actually worked through this problem solving effort. This is the Chapter 19 Nuisance Abatement Program. Just to give you a little background, in keeping with some of the philosophies that we've been working with here in Matthews, community oriented policing, problem oriented policing, and intelligence led policing, we are working on a problem that we've identified as a recurring issue here in the town. A property inside the town of Matthews, not to get too specific, but it is in the Crestdale neighborhood. We've seen a significant number of calls for service. The big book you were referencing, that is all of the documentation that we are working with in reference to one piece of property inside the town of Matthews. I'll give you a little background. In 2018, when I first got here, we started, or we noticed that there were two incidents involving firearms, two shootings that occurred at the same location, which kind of prompted us to go into more of a proactive approach to try to figure out how to deal with this recurring issue. We started working with our DAA partners, our ALI partners, and kind of evaluated the Chapter 19. Just to give you more background, since 2005, we've handled 212 calls for service at one location. We handled 31 arrests between that same timeframe. Ninety of those, or 90 of those 200 calls for service required us to push some type of incident report. Just in the last 12 months, 30 calls for service, seven arrests, 14 incident reports, three assaults, two of those involving discharge of a firearm, one overdose, three narcotics violations, and two missing persons. This process and program that we're working through is our way to work with the property owner to try to identify an end result that will mitigate or lessen what we call excessive use of police service. This one particular property is, is kind of pulling more police resources and more police attention than any other property in the town. So, we believe this Chapter 19, after consulting with ALI, was our best opportunity. The desire in this entire process, though, I just want to make clear, is not to take this property. Our entire goal is to work with the property owner to mitigate these, to figure a way to come up with a better solution for them to lessen the calls for service that we're receiving out to this property. So, I will tell you that we are very early on in this process. We have consulted with the town attorney. He has heard the case, which is part of the reason why we're bringing this forward. He has heard the case. He will be on board with this process from the beginning on. The property owner has been served, if you will, or at least notified of the first step of this process, which is mediation. We're going to sit down, we're going to identify our concerns. Property owner will identify their concerns, and hopefully we can come up with a solution to move forward to reduce the excessive amount of police services that we're providing. So, again, this is just notification and update. There's really no board action necessary. We have already started this process, and we're hoping that the beginning will be the end of our excessive use.
Any questions? Mr. Higgin?
Yes, Chief. Is there a monetary cost for the property owner to participate in this?
Depending on what the mitigation, or the media, I'm sorry, the mediation decisions are, there may be some requirements of us to clean up the property, remove some of the debris around the land, if you will. So, there may be some associated costs there. But ultimately, there are no further costs than, than it was their cause, I should say. It's their property, it's their mess, it's the things that are starting to lead to this, this excessive use.
Mr. Urban?
Chief, what are you doing in concerns of the adjacent neighbors to that particular property? Are those property owners being informed that you're trying to go through this mediation process? Because I'm sure there's a lot of angst and uncertainty from their standpoint.
This is the beginning of that notification, if you will. We have spoken to many of the residents out there. A lot of this information we get about the ongoings on this property are coming from the residents. A lot of the calls for service that we're receiving, the 212, they're coming from the adjacent property owners that are seeing this significant nuisance happening in their neighborhood and asking us to do something.
Mr. Querry?
Chief, I'd like, I'd like to thank you for taking a proactive step in this, because sooner or later, we're going to have more problems. It's not, it doesn't seem like it's going away, it's getting worse. So, I really appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Seeing no further questions? Thank you for that item.
Thank you.
And the next item is authorization to pursue a grant through the Governor's Highway Safety Program. And I'll call upon you, Chief, for that.
Thank you. Next item, as you mentioned, it's about, or it's our request, if you will, for authorization for the police department to pursue a grant through GHSP or the Governor's Highway Safety Program. This grant is a, is a grant that they are offering. It's based, it's actually statewide, but it's based on county numbers. So, what we do is, is we look at this grant, and the state will provide us reimbursement of 85%, 70%, and 50% each year thereafter that we are in compliance with this grant. If you remember, one of my main goals when I first got here was, well, one of several goals, was crime reduction, reduction in violent crime, and then, again, the reduction in the number of traffic collisions that we see in this town. The number of traffic collisions over 2,000 a year in a town this size is pretty significant. Just to point out a number that was brought to my attention today, if you think about 650,000 registered motor vehicles in Mecklenburg County, another 185,000 registered motor vehicles in Union County, we see a little over 200,000 of those cars traveling through Matthews on a daily basis. That number of traffic, or that number of vehicles coming through the town of Matthews has significantly increased over the years, and is causing us a huge drain on police resources with the amount of collisions that we are seeing. This grant that we're requesting to apply for will, as I said, give us 85% the first year, and it's not just salary, it's salary plus fringe. So, all of the fringe benefits, retirement, all of that is included, 85%. 70% the second year, and 50% each year thereafter. So, it doesn't end on the third year, we reapply. We don't get this next portion of this that I'll tell you about in a second. We don't get equipment reimbursed to it because we've already received it for the first grant. But we will get that 50% continued for the life of us meeting that, the goals and objectives that they set. In addition to not only the 85, 70, and 50, the state will reimburse us up to $240,800 for equipment. That includes vehicles, that includes equipment, uniforms, lidars, radars, everything we need to basically perform as a traffic safety unit. Last part of this, there is, we've done a little bit of calculations, as you saw, and again, these are only rough estimates. So, please, don't hold me to the $40,977 at the end of the year. We have to see what we get. But that would be the town's contribution moving forward if we apply for this grant. I will tell you that I think that this grant is a godsend for us. We are really drowning in the number of traffic collisions that we're seeing out there, and our inability, I should say, to effectively address those does hurt. So, this grant would kind of move us forward with that.
Mr. Higgin?
Chief, what is your degree of confidence that you can maintain the renewal requirements and get this every year after year three?
Matthews is estimated to grow 2.5% each year. As I said, we're going to continually see the amount of traffic coming through this town. If we can impact safety even 10% of what we're seeing now, I think we can maintain this for a very long time.
Mr. Querry?
Yeah, Chief, what is the minimum number of years in this? Is it the three years?
The three years, yes, sir.
And then you have to reapply?
Yes, sir.
You may or may not get it at that point in time?
Yes, sir. Depending on whether or not, obviously, the funds are available, and they continue with this grant. But I know that they've continued this grant a number of years. At least 20 years this grant has been going. Yeah, I saw the look on all your faces, exactly. It's been going for 20 years. So, I'm anticipating it continuing, and us applying for, and hopefully receiving the 50% for these four officers.
Okay. Are we looking for a motion?
Yes, we do have.
Like, make a motion in that we approve applying for this grant, and just keep us informed as it goes forward.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Okay, motion been made and seconded. Do you want, Mr. Query, would you like to reference a memo in your motion?
If I get there, I would. The recommended motion says authorize the police chief to pursue a state grant that would provide the listed costs shared to expand department staffing by three sworn police officers and one sworn police corporal in order to develop a traffic enforcement team to address the current and increasing demand on policing services within the town.
Okay, is that acceptable?
It's acceptable, yes.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Request for temporary street closures. We have Leanne Moore, special events manager of Park and Recreation.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. This is just our annual request every year from Matthews Parks and Recreation and the special event office, as well as Matthews Alive, to make the listed street closures, temporary street closures for a lot of our annual events and festivals. I'll spare all of the points on the memo, but it is for Beach Fest Matthews, May 10th and 11th. Similar process to the past couple of years. Matthews Fourth of July, the Family Parade, again, same process as in past years, and Matthews Alive also, again, no new processes from years past. I will say that on the Matthews Alive segment, I took off the Kiwanis 5K details. I understand they're talking about a different route for that this year, and I didn't, I don't know that information. So I'll let them come before you separately. But everything else is the same, same types of closures, same times, save, same movement from the morning to the afternoon, allowing for the elementary school pickup and drop off. So no major differences there.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Leanne, would that include the hometown holiday tree lighting celebration as well?
It does, sorry, yeah. And we're anticipating the same event as well. There has been a little bit of discussion in our department about moving that back to Stumptown Park, but for now, it's planned to be here. So that closure here at the Town Green would also be the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgin.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the requested street closures to ensure the continued safety and success of Matthews signature events and festivals as detailed in Ms. Moore's January 28, 2019 memo. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12E, consider proposed topics for the 2019 planning conference. I'll turn to the assistant.
Oh, D. Still Leanne for D.
I'm just still standing here. It's all right.
Oh. I'm sorry, I clicked on that already and, okay. So this item is special events ordinances 93.06 and 130.02 for the exemption of Positively Matthews Food Truck Friday and Symphony Night in Stumptown Park.
It is, again, very similar request to years past. Obviously, allowing the sale and consumption of alcohol, which we don't normally do at our events, so this would be exemption for those three events. With Symphony Night being the addition to the memo this year, I know we've had some discussion in the past about making that kind of an official beer pavilion so that we have the control and the safety restrictions that we have at the other events. So we've added that to the list, but that's the only change. Similar setup to the past couple of years for all three. Consumption and sale only in the grass area in front of the stage, I guess we could call it, in Stumptown Park. Obviously, folks there to check IDs. We'll be using local breweries and a winery this year. So again, very similar process to years past.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Leanne, have, have you had any discussions about the opportunity for Beach Fest and Matthews Alive to have another quality craft brewery or local winery?
Yes. That topic comes up a lot. Beach Fest probably firstly, I would say, a little bit smaller crowd to test that type of thing at a festival. Stacey may want to weigh in on, on such a thing. We've kind of, up to date, we've kept it at some of our, or to date, we've kept it at some of our, I would say, smaller events, not festivals, just from a control standpoint and a crowd standpoint, but you may want to speak to that. We haven't made any changes yet.
You do have to be concerned with defining the area and where the alcohol can be consumed in by North Carolina state law. So the, when you're only dealing with a Stumptown Park event, it's real easy for us to, to put up a, you know, a little bit of tape line or whatever to show everybody clearly no alcohol past this point.
I see.
Once you open up all these different points of entry and exit and the streets are all open, it very much makes people think that the entire festival area is alcohol, would be allowed, and for that to take place, then you have to, all the different points of entry at the different roadway entrances, up at, you know, at John Street, down McDowell, then so it would greatly expand. We would need a lot more staffing and probably theoretically, or realistically be like a showpros type staffing or something like that than, than police staffing because we're already pretty much maxed out for those large events. So it, it can be done, but it is, it is a little bit problematic.
I understand now the logistics involved. Thank you.
Yeah, it would have to be a very controlled, if not in the entire area. It would have to be a much more controlled pavilion than what we're doing now. Again, it can be done, but I'd probably have to go back to the riot fencing and the tenting and so that it's a very controlled area. It, it does come up. We have a lot of requests, especially about Beach Fest. Matthews Alive is kind of another animal, and that would be maybe a little bit larger that I would want to take on right this minute. I would test at Beach Fest if we did it at all.
We don't want any riot fencing in Matthews.
Not really, no.
Mr. Higgin.
Thank you.
Have there been any issues with, in the past, that positively Matthew, or any of the events that we've allowed beer sales?
There have not. I've been really happy with that and very proud of that. I think we started out really small. You know, we kept everybody very contained in a very small area to kind of get them, get us used to that and, and others used to that. Alcohol was a very new thing for us just a few years ago. Haven't had any issues. You may be able to speak better to that?
Yeah, if I may, we've actually had a lot less issues. It was difficult to keep, because we don't have checks to check people's coolers and bags as they enter the park, and especially probably the most prevalent one is the symphony. The park is so full, and some people would bring alcohol in because I think in other venues where the symphony is, that's allowed, so they just naturally assume it's allowed in our Symphony Park event. And then other patrons would complain because some people had alcohol, and they would come and they would call the police and ask us to come in and deal with this issue of somebody having alcohol in the park, which we, you know, we, usually they're not unruly or anything, but it is a violation. We'd have to address it, and then they would say, well, then that person has alcohol over there, and then we'd have to go over there. So we actually greatly reduced the number by just saying it is allowed in, at this particular event, and it's, it's helped out greatly for the police department. We have not, we've not had, it's been doing this for 12 years now. I'm not aware, I can't think of any event where we've had to make any kind of arrest or we've had any intoxication issues. It still could happen, but we've been very fortunate and not experienced any issues.
Good.
Mr. Urban.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion then that we approve requested exemptions to allow sale, consumption of alcohol on town property in Stumptown Park for Positively Matthews, Matthews Food Truck Fridays, and Symphony Night events in 2019. Per the memo dated January 28, 2019, to Hazen from Leanne, our special events manager.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right. I will say that, that I think, especially during the symphony.
Right.
There's people who come in with wine, and I mean, it's, it's more of a situation. One couple I saw had a glass of wine and a candle and everything.
Chandelier, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know.
It's happening, so we may as well control it.
Well, yeah, yeah. So, all right? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 12E, getting back on track here. Consider proposed topics for 2019 planning conference. Becky?
Sure. So if you go to the second page, that's up there on the screen, all of you provided feedback and input on your priorities for the topics, as well as your interest in seeing them either discussed at the planning conference or perhaps at a later 5:30. So all of that information has been compiled, and then they've been placed in rank order from the items that had the highest priority and the strongest support for attendance at the planning conference on down to the lowest. So you can see, as you go down the list, there starts to be a little bit of variation and interest to discuss it at the planning conference versus a 5:30. But our recommendation at this point would be to put the agenda together in the order that you see here, so that we make sure that we're discussing the items that are of the highest priority to the board. We can take the time that we need on those, and then as the days go on, if we end up running out of time, then we've really run out of time on items that were perhaps not as important with maybe pulling a few items off, such as the inviting charter school reps to explain their business model, maybe automatically pulling that off and putting that on a 5:30, given the support that was indicated by the board. So that would be our recommendation at this point in time, but certainly we're happy to do whatever the board desires.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Higgin.
I'd like to recommend that you use my prioritization. I'm just kidding. I think it's a good idea.
Is that prioritization A?
No, I think the, the consensus prioritization is fine, and that's, we don't need a motion for that, do we?
Uh, we do need to discuss the topics and set the schedule for February 29, 2019 planning conference, which is the 21st.
Do you want to just do it Friday, Saturday?
Well, we didn't, yeah, we talked about Thursday afternoon, and then we talked about Friday and Saturday. What's the pleasure?
I'm flexible.
So am I. Isn't it good? Let's hear from those people who aren't so flexible. Mr. Urban and Mr. Higgin.
Retirees?
Yeah. I would prefer to go later on Friday and Saturday as necessary and then not, not meet Sunday.
So we would start Friday morning then? Is that the?
I thought, wasn't that the plan all along?
There was some discussion about dropping Sunday and putting time on, on Thursday afternoon or evening.
Yeah.
Because we have a Monday meeting and Sunday, we'd be burnt out, so to speak.
Right.
And Wednesday is Raleigh.
Yeah, that's true. So, okay. So do you believe we can do Friday and Saturday, two full days?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You have a series of them that were on the 5:30, and there are some that are actually enough votes that would be the majority of the board.
Yes.
So would it be possible, based on that factor alone, that those items move to 5:30s, lessening the schedule to help Becky pull off the magical Friday/Saturday?
Sure, that's no problem.
It's a good idea. Very good.
So in, in talking it over with Hazen, we do feel like there are a number of items that will likely be fairly quick discussions. So I, I think it can be done. We can just work with staff to determine the time periods that we think are needed for some of the heavier items that are up higher in the prioritization list.
Okay. So with that, we need a motion to set the schedule for February 22nd and 23rd, 2019, for the town planning conference. And to adopt the final topics that we have listed here.
So we could pull off any of them that had a majority listed for 5:30, and that could be, what's left could be the agenda topics that we place on the list for the planning conference.
Yeah.
The green highlighted on the right can be just sorted down.
Yeah.
I do have a quick question. Priority number one, McKee Road in Pleasant Plains, 27 acres, a conceptual plan for use. Are we going to develop a conceptual plan for the use, or is Corey going to show us a conceptual plan for use?
Corey was given a directive to pull together what the recommended use of that property would be, and then that can be a starting, a starting point for the board.
That could be a whole day, you know, that could be one topic.
Yes, there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yep. You made it.
I didn't, I don't think I made the motion.
I'll make a motion that we finalize the topics as submitted in the Excel spreadsheet. There was a suggestion we sort the green highlighted on the right column down and move those over to 5:30 unless we have enough time, and set the schedule for February, was it 25 and 6?
22nd and 23rd.
22nd and 23rd for the 2019 planning conference.
Good job. Second that.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Mr. Query.
On the McKee Road one, Charlie, is that land tied up that where we couldn't build anything on it as far as affordable housing and that type of stuff?
Well, there are no conditions on it.
None of it?
Yeah, but what you use it for, obviously would have to be a public purpose type use. But yeah, it's, it's a feet conveyance.
Okay.
I've seen there, there are deed, but we haven't gotten the original yet, but we've seen the, the deed.
And I'm going back to what we talked about at 5:30 about could the town have some land that we might could, could work with?
Well, that's another legal question altogether, different.
Okay.
So we may deal with that one at another time.
Okay.
This is not redevelopment property that's being changed and that's used, let's put it that way.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Everyone in favor? Raise your hand. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, 12F, F is receive the monthly budget report. And I'll turn to the assistant town manager for that.
Sure. So what we have to present to you tonight is our budget, revenues and expenditures through the first half of the current fiscal year. So this is through the end of December. We don't have any concerns about any of the way that any of our revenues are tracking at this point. We feel very comfortable. And we are also very comfortable with how expenditures are lining out for the year. So happy to take any questions other than that.
Any questions for Becky? Okay. Very good. Next item is the mayor's report.
I do have a question real quickly.
Mr. Higgin.
I'm sorry. Do we know when we might expect to have a new finance director?
Sure. So we're working with developmental.
I love that you're not doing a fine job.
I, I will be happy to give it back. So we are working with developmental associates, and we engaged with them prior to the end of the calendar year, but they said that in their experience, it is such a slow time of year that folks just do not apply around the holidays. So they strongly suggested that we wait until into the new calendar year. So they came to town hall recently and did some focus groups to talk to staff and talk to some other stakeholders about the type of finance director that would work best here, and they've put together the ad that went up, if not today, it will be up tomorrow. That'll be a 30-day posting, and then they will go through the process of vetting the candidates with input from Hazen and I, and we're looking at an assessment center at the end of March. Hopefully, we'll get a great candidate out of that, and then it would just be a matter of doing background, and then if they have to give notice or move or anything like that. So looking at that, it could realistically be May-June by the time somebody gets on board if they, if they have to move, you know, that just takes time. But we've engaged with existing staff, and Hazen and I are prepared to take on the upcoming budget process, so we will, we will manage through it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Is a finance director for a municipality such as this any different than for a, a large business?
There are some differences with public accounting, public finance, just with the types of revenues that we have, the types of financing options that we have available. So it's not.
What time of year the revenues come in?
Yeah, so it's, it's, you know, a bright person can learn, so I, I would never want to immediately cross somebody off the list if they didn't have it, but certainly, our preference would be somebody who has an intimate working, existing knowledge of, of public financing principles.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Becky. Next item is mayor's report, just a couple things. You saw the new website earlier at our 5:30 meeting. That also had a item at the bottom for reporting potholes, and, you know, I've, I've turned in eight so far, where CJ's already left, but I think I've at least noticed that there's a lot of potholes out there that are suddenly appearing as the water freezes and falls on the streets, so that'll be available for our constituents to, to report to the town, and we can get those fixed. This Saturday, I've got the meet with mayor breakfast at Nicky's at 8 o'clock, so you're more than welcome to tell folks to, to come and join in. We typically have three or four people, and so far, it's been different folks, different Attorney's report.
No report, Mayor.
Town managers' report?
No report.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Go ahead, Jeff.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.